All right, well, at this time, I will be calling the City of Bowie regular city council meeting on Monday, October 20th, 2025, in council chambers to order at 7:03 PM. If everyone who is able, would you please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, thank you, everyone. At this time, Madam City Clerk, can you confirm we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor, we do have a quorum this evening. In council chambers, we have Councilmember Sev, Councilmember Rogers, Mayor Pro Tem Wolfley, Councilmember Brady, and Councilmember Truesdale, and V A teams. Vertically, we have Mayor Adams.
At this time, I will ask the Mayor Pro Tem if he would take the lead, because I hear this echo and I can't see anyone. I see the names up in those pictures. So Mayor Pro Tem, if he would, would you proceed?
Yes, sir. Alrighty, so next on our agenda, additions, deletions, or amendments. Anybody have any changes to the agenda to propose? Seeing none, we will move along. Next item on the agenda is citizen participation. Madam City Clerk, I believe we have a couple of people signed up?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Alrighty, we have a couple of folks to speak here this evening. The first person is Victor Tarpe. Victor here? Alright. Very good. Welcome, sir. How are you doing this evening? Why don't you move to the center there, the microphone, so you can be heard? And the people at home, if you didn't introduce yourself?
My name is Victor Tarpe. I'm the owner of the festival Metre in Autumn that I'm trying to bring into the city of Bowie. Metre in Autumn basically is a festival that covers the diversity within the DMV era. I myself, I've worked in the music business for 18 years. I've toured in a lot of cities. One of the key things I've learned, I think that the DMV era would be the ideal place for a destination festival like Coachella. You guys ever heard of Memphis in May? You know, you guys probably be like within the minority, because I've asked lots of people, and a lot of people don't know Metre in Autumn. I mean, Memphis in May. Memphis in May, Metre in Autumn is similar to it. It basically incorporates diversity, economic development, international economic development, community development, as well as initiative that help the community. There's something similar what I'm trying to bring out here. We are looking at the Bowie Bay Sax Stadium to host the festival. It will be October 9th, 10th, and 11th. 9th, 10th is, the 9th is more geared towards the younger audience. The 10th would be geared more towards a mixed crowd. And then the 11th is geared to most the gospel audience. The goal for the festival is to create a destination event out here that can create a huge economic impact to this area. So let me give you guys an example. You talk about Memphis in May. Memphis in May, in 20, was it like two years ago? It brought into the economy into Memphis, within one week, it brought in close to 25 million, I think. So if you look at the city of Coachella, city of Coachella, Coachella Festival last year brought into the city of Coachella economic impact totaling $890 million. So what we are looking at is something similar to build a foundation out here, something like that that attracts people internationally, as well as within the DMV era and regionally, and build it from here. I think that we can bring a good amount of economic impact to the area. I mean, if you look at British Columbia right now, I think this is something that is needed within the county when you talk about revenue-wise.
Speak into the microphone.
Is that better? Okay. Oh. My mom always told me that I always whisper. I never, I never listen. So what I'm saying is, if anyone know the festival Coachella, Coachella brought into the city of Coachella last year $890 million in economic impact. What we are trying to do here is to build a festival similar to a Coachella South by Southwest or Memphis in May that can not only contribute to the economy, as well as build the community as well. We have various different initiatives that we want to bring here with the festival. One of the things I'm working on is try to build an initiative with the Maryland University Hospital for breast cancer. I've been a avid supporter of breast cancer for 10 to 15 years. I think that bringing a festival like that that attracts community contribution, as well as economic development will do a huge benefit for the county. So Memphis in May, one of the things that Memphis in May does, Memphis in May create an initiative with, where every year they salute a country. And what they do with that is they allow the business community for that country to come within Memphis and build relationship with the business community within that to help prop up the economy of Memphis. Memphis in May has been around for 50-plus years. But still, a lot of people don't seem to know about it. But we are, we are looking to bring something like that here. One of the things I learned from touring is that the DMV area, if you talk to people in the entertainment business, we grade different areas. So you have grade A, B, and C. So grade A is where everybody wants to perform. Everybody wants to be at because the opportunity there is really great. Grade A, the DMV era falls underneath that. And I think that that would be, this would be a good opportunity for the county.
Thank you very much. I hear the timer going off. I appreciate you coming in.
I'm not even listening to you.
That's alright. We very much appreciate you coming in, sharing your thoughts. If you would be so kind as to share your contact information with city staff.
I will.
And we'll take a look at it from there. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, so much. I appreciate the council giving me the time.
Thank you, Mr. Tarpe.
Alright, have a good day.
Alright, next on our list, forgive me, I'm having a difficult time reading the handwriting, but I believe it's Lynetta Trau Jackson?
Yes, Lynetta Trau.
Lynetta, okay, thank you very much. Lynetta, welcome.
Hi, good evening to both mayors and all council people. So I noticed that I, my concern that I addressed at the last meeting that you guys had, it's on the agenda. It's on the new business, and it's D. And so I'm here in reference to the property that I live on, which is Governor Green's Apartments. And it's in reference to the rodent issue. I just first want to start off by saying all the people that have had their hands on this so far, I just want to thank them. Ms. Roxy, Ms. Lori Cunningham, and Martin Mitchell, Ms. M J Sutton. They really have been amazing, so I just want to give them thank you for taking something that may seem small to the extent that they have, that has the property doing better things. So they have taken away by the dumpster where I live, this majorly big tree where they had their family in there, I guess. And so by them taking that away, the property manager did say that she would introduce two days where she would have Terminex come out to the property, put some more black boxes down, and I guess poison. So we have not noticed that. We did notice one day that they did come out and they added the black boxes. But these are some smart things running around. So they use the black boxes as trampolines. They just jump right on it, over it, gone past it, whatever. So maybe the new babies, they are unaware and they go into it, but not the mom and the dads. So the issue now that I'm trying to address is maybe because they have taken this bush away from them that around our building for that section, not the entirety property. I don't live on the entire property. I don't know what's happening everywhere else. But I just know that for that huge property, we just have those two major dumpsters. And what I noticed now is that they've taken away this big bush. So now they run around our buildings. I live on the third floor. It was on the third floor. So now they've taken that away. Now it's just all around and about. So now I'm just proposing maybe more trash pickup days, because we pay for trash pickup at our door, mandatory. Even if you don't want it, you still have to pay for it. So we pay for that. And maybe proposing another trash pickup day. Also, I wanted to propose, because I checked and looked into it, some properties that I noticed, they have dumpsters, and they're called, I'm sorry. They're called eight-yard front-load dumpsters. So they have them at eight yards, and then they have them in a six yards. So maybe putting that out there, because we have the big compactor. But because they only pick up one time for the whole property, by the time that we get our trash picked back up, it is, maybe people are fearful to even go back there, because it's, that's incredible. You just really have to see it in order to believe it. They're out there the daytime, the nighttime. You can go out there anytime. They're there. And so the fear factor is, we have the children on the property. We have people that live on the ground floors. They have their patios. They don't even come out and use the patios, because you don't know when it's going to be in the bush. I don't exit on the opposite side of the building where I used to live. I exit on the courtyard side. So you notice them there, because you see the holes that they have dug in the ground, and you notice them a lot around the small bushes of the trees. So I'm just now proposing to have those small bushes move from around my neighbors', you know, their patios, by our buildings, and see if that may help. But the black boxes is just for entertainment for them. They're really not fazed by that. So I don't know what the poison that they're using. I don't know if Terminex is suitable to knock out the situation, because these emails have been coming out for forever until you guys have jumped in and lit some fire under them. And I can't say thank you enough. So I don't know, I don't know what to do. I want to say, inside of my home, I have been there this year, coming in, it'll be four years. The maintenance guys are great. I have no complaints inside of my home. I don't have roaches and, I don't live like that. So when Ms. Sutton came over, I invited her in. She was able to see what I mean. So I'm not contributing to the issue in the inside of my home. I just don't want it inside of my home. So I don't know, you know, what else you guys can do, but I just want to say thank you for whatever you guys have all been doing thus far. They're paying attention to you all, because they were not paying attention to us as the residents. So I just want to say thank you. And I appreciate everything that you're doing, and hopefully we can get something else done that keeps me as a Bowie resident and not moving out, because I'm scared. So thank you, guys, and bless you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. So thank you for being here this evening, and we will, obviously, we'll cover it a bit later, but a special shout-out to staff already for the work they've done, and I very much appreciate it. Thank you. Alrighty, so that takes care of present, excuse me, citizen participation for this evening. Next, we will move on to presentations. This evening, we're fortunate enough to have a presentation for proclamation to the Charles H. Wesley Lodge Number 147. Mr. Mayor, would you like to speak to this? Mr. Mayor, we cannot hear you.
You cannot hear me?
No.
This time, we can hear a little bit, just a whisper.
Okay, well, I was wanting to read the proclamation.
Alright, Mr. Mayor, we are unable to hear you, so I will proceed. I will proceed with reading the proclamation. Hopefully, things can get adjusted in the meantime, and perhaps you can chime in afterwards. So we'd like to make a proclamation for the Charles H. Wesley Lodge, and we have members here this evening. So why don't you please join us up here at the, at the microphone? And then we will, we will read this, and then we'll have an opportunity to have a photograph taken as well. So it's, our proclamation reads, "Be it hereby known to all that the council of the city of Bowie, Maryland, takes great pleasure in recognizing Charles H. Wesley Lodge Number 147 on the occasion of their 35th anniversary. The city council congratulates the Honorable Kevin L. Barney Jr., Most Worshipful Grand Master, and the members of Charles H. Wesley Lodge Number 147 for their 35 years of service to the community and beyond. And further, as Charles H. Wesley Lodge Number 147 continues to dedicate themselves to making a difference in the lives of their brothers, their families, and the community, the city council is pleased to extend its sincere best wishes as they celebrate the 35th anniversary and wishes them many more years of continued service." Presented this 20th day of October 2025. Is there a motion on the floor for approval? Is there a second?
Second.
The motion's been made and properly seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much, gentlemen. We greatly do appreciate.
Thank you. If I could have a minute to say something? Just want to say good evening, everyone, and Mayor Tim Adams, members of the city council, distinguished guests, and community leaders. I'm Anthony Hill, master of Charles H. Wesley Lodge 147 for the Masonic Year this year. I just want to say that, thank you so much for this incredible honor. It is truly humbling to stand before you today as we receive this proclamation for the city of Bowie. I want to take a moment to thank everyone who has made this possible, our partners, our volunteers, our supporters, and our community members who have dedicated their time, talent, and passion to this effort. This recognition belongs to all of you. I also like to extend special thanks to my brothers here, who are here with me today for just believing in us, and also, you know, just letting us be alive, determined to make a difference. So thank you, brothers. Again, I just want to say thank you again. Thank you for your time. And yeah, we're proud to be a part of Bowie. Thank you.
Thank you very much, very much. And I will, I will extend just a couple words. Please stay there. We want to give, I want to give you the proclamation. We also hopefully get a photograph as well. But I do want to say a special thank you to all of you and all the good works that you do for our community. It's organizations such as yours that distinguishes Bowie from the ordinary. And that is what makes our community superlative. And we very much appreciate your participation in that effort. So thank you very much for all that you've done over the years. And 35 years is no small achievement. So thank you very much.
Thank you as well.
And, see, Tim, can you hear us now?
Mayor Pro Tem, I'm going to put the mayor on the speaker on my cellphone, and he wants to say
Excellent, very good.
a couple of words, and maybe I could get him.
Alright, and then while he's speaking, why don't we join down here on the floor?
Mayor, go ahead.
Hey, thank you. I just wanted to do another thank you to Charles H. Wesley Lodge Number 147. I think we all understand what 35 years mean. But I think it's so important that we, as a community, understand how much they have contributed to supporting and uplifting our community. So I just wanted to make sure that, not just on behalf of the council, but me as well personally, want to thank them for all they've done and for all the brotherhood and leadership they've shown, and also to myself and to others. So thank you so very much, Charles H. Wesley Lodge Number 147.
Thank you.
Ready, one, two, three. One, two, three.
One, five, six.
Seven, eight, nine.
Excellent. Thank you all very much.
He's coming through his mute, too. Who are sisters? He's coming through. They're turning off. Alright, well, thank you very much. We'll now move on to city boards and committees. Mr. Mayor, just as a comms check, are you on mute? Are you able to hear us, and are you able to speak? Perhaps not. Alright, hopefully, we'll get through the glitch. Alrighty, we have three items up this evening for city boards and committees. The first is for Ms. Carla Carter. She was interviewed on September 2nd for appointment to the Diversity Committee. The council concur to appoint her to the committee as a regular member for a two-year term. Ms. Rogers, would you like to?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. It is my pleasure to make a motion to appoint to the Diversity Committee as a regular member, Ms. Carla Carter.
There's been a motion made. Is there a second? It has been properly seconded. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. It's unanimous. So congratulations, Ms. Carter. Is Ms. Carter here? Okay, great. We're going to call you up in a moment. I have a couple more items here to to call forward, and then we'll have you swearing in. The next item here, next person, is Mr. Daniel Memenovitch, who was interviewed on October 6th for appointment to the Community Recreation Committee. Council concur to appoint him to the committee as a regular member. Mr. Truesdale, would you care to make a motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I would like to appoint Mr. Daniel Memenovitch to the Community Recreation Committee.
There's been a motion made and a second. Call for the vote. All those in favor with an aye, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Mendevich. We'll get you here as well. Are you here this evening? Oh, there you are. Excellent. Thank you. And then our next person is Mr. Rufus Bickersteth. Mr. Rufus Bickersteth was interviewed on October 6th for appointment to the Administrative Review Board and Advisory Planning Board. Council concur to appoint him to the Administrative Review Board as an alternate member for a two-year term, and to the Advisory Planning Board as a regular member for a two-year term. Is there a motion for appointment, please? Been properly moved and seconded. So thank you very much, and we will call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. It's unanimous. Congratulations. Alright, well, our three newly hired and now lifetime employees of the city, come on down. Alright. Alrighty, we're going to do this. Come on right up here to the, to the microphone. Alright, look, come on. Not a maybe, seal, but legitimate. Alright. So what we're going to do is we'll have her swearing in. I'll ask you, raise your right hand, and you can either swear or affirm. So you have a choice. Say, I swear, or I affirm. You'll state your name, and we'll proceed through. When you get to the point where we talk about your specific committee, we'll just go left to right, your right to left. And we'll just go down, and you can each indicate which committee you're on. Alright? So here we go. So raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Carla Carter.
I'm Daniel Memenovitch.
Do you swear or affirm?
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland?
And I'll be faithful, true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof?
And support the Constitution and the laws thereof.
And I will, to the best of my skill and judgment,
And I will, to the best of my skill and judgment,
diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice?
Diligently, faithfully, without partiality. Yes.
Execute the office of?
Office of community event planning.
Excellent.
Execute the office of regular member of community recreation.
Execute the office of the Diversity Committee as a regular member.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
Alright, congratulations. Come on up here, come on up here. We have something for you. And then we will also have an opportunity. We'll come down for a picture. Daniel, that's for you.
Thank you, Daniel. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Again, let's congratulate.
Thank you very much. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Alright, Carla.
Welcome aboard. And welcome aboard.
Come on. This is my. That's right.
Congratulations and thank you. You don't know where we've been, so you're.
It never happens if you don't take a picture. If you go on over, you can get a photograph. There you go. Open them up, and there you are. Excellent. Again, thank you very much. Alright, thank you very much, folks. I would like to just extend an invitation to everybody else that is here, as well to those watching at home, to visit our website. We do have vacancies on our committees. Our city operates with a lot of input from the community. And membership in our various committees is a great way to get involved and help out. So if you have an interest, you've got time, please do share and give back to the community, and visit our website and see what's available that might be up your alley. Thank you very much. And then let's go back to our agenda here. We will now turn to the council for announcements. Are there any announcements from council members this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Please, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, colleagues on the council, we are a nonpartisan body, which I believe is a good thing, and things should continue as long as we can. We do, as a city, facilitate, make possible, and often encourage. We do, as a city, facilitate, make possible, and often encourage residents to participate in peaceful demonstrations. We've had many over the years throughout the city for many different causes. We've had a series recently in front of the Bowie Library extending along Route 450. Several of us have participated in these, along with many of our neighbors, over the last few weeks. I just want to thank the organizers and the participants in these particular events for their very peaceful demonstrations, for their very positive show of force, or show of their views, I should say. These folks, I think, represent what positive protest looks like. And I just want to encourage folks who participate in those to continue to model the kind of ideal behavior that we all appreciate and expect in Bowie. And I also want to extend a big thank you to our law enforcement, who have been very helpful in maintaining security at these events. I know a lot of these demonstrations are happening, like along Route 450, which can potentially create challenges, but our police department has made sure that everyone, protesters and passerby alike, have remained safe and I'm grateful for them, as always, for helping out with these events. So a big thank you to staff and a big thank you to the community.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stev. Anybody else have any comments, questions? Mr. Brady?
Thank you, Mayor. This is more informative announcement for the public. Last Wednesday, there was a troubling incident that occurred. You know, you watch the news, you see Portland, you see Los Angeles, you see other places where ICE has been rounding up people. Week ago, they were in Bowie. They apprehended somebody in Bowie. And what's most troubling for me personally is that it was two streets over. The house was on the route that I walked my dog on, so I'm very disturbed by this. But we have to realize, while we had an excellent demonstration of the First Amendment on Saturday, we also are seeing some of the negative impacts of what we're seeing in today's society and they've reached Bowie. So I just wanted to let people know. Also, I know Chief is aware of this, but last week, Anthony Brown put out a guidance memorandum for Maryland law enforcement on the requirements of Maryland law when working with federal law enforcement agencies. I think, and I will not ask for a commitment tonight, but I think more for the education of the public, that maybe we ought to hold a work session to discuss this so we can educate our residents on this issue and make them better prepared in dealing with this in the future. It was an unfortunate episode and I hope it doesn't reoccur in Bowie. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Councilman Trusdale?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just want to say hello to all the beautiful and wonderful people in the city of Bowie, particularly District 3. I couldn't let this day, this month, actually go by without congratulating and giving just a big shout-out to all the breast cancer survivors. This is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And so we, you know, we support the efforts and those that are still with us, those that are no longer with us, and those that are in the fight. Last but not least, I would like to, you know, send a shout-out to our dedicated federal workers in Bowie. Thank you for your service. We recognize that these are challenging times and we all are facing difficult times and want to know, want you to know that your work value is appreciated. The city of Bowie stands with you. Excuse me. The city of Bowie stands with you on behalf of all the districts and we hopeful that this resolution will be something in the near future, all right, established. So, thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Councilman Trusdale. Councilwoman Rogers?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So it was my honor last week to be up in the mountains of western Maryland to areas I had never seen before. And mountains that were very high and the temperature changed at least 10 to 15 degrees, which caused my tire balance to be off, so I was freaked out behind that. But with all that being said, I had the privilege and honor of receiving, on behalf of the city of Bowie, a sustainability award. So I, along with Dan Mears, stood there and we accepted the award and took pictures on behalf of the city. So the city of Bowie has a lot to be proud of when it comes to sustainability. We are a unique community and I don't think we recognize how great we are unless we visit other places and then we see what they don't have. And, you know, as Councilmember Stev talked about Saturday, Saturday was a community event that had a lot of warm feelings and a lot of support and a lot of energy. And it probably was a larger participation because of what happened in our 4th district with ICE. So I appreciate, I appreciate being here. I appreciate representing the citizens of Bowie. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rogers. Mr. Mayor, any comments? Announcements? Please, sir. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, yes. I'd just like to take a moment and make sure we are all aware that October is National Disability Employment Awareness Month and recognizing the individual and the invaluable contributions of people with disabilities to the American workforce. So I'd like to make sure that we all recognize those with disabilities and their contribution, but also encourage their employment and that we present and that we show appreciation for what they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman and Deb Umadu, do you have any comments?
Mayor Protem, she is not on there. That's staff.
Very good. All right, well, thank you.
Just same initials.
That's all right. Very good. Well, that's all right. Well, since that was staff, that brings us to a close on council announcements and we will turn over to staff. We will look to our city manager for a report.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and city council and Mayor Adams out there. Currently, our employees are performing at a high level. We're getting ready for the Cadillac service of lead collection in the city of Bowie and our people are getting ready to do that and working hard on it. And otherwise, that's it. Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you very much and I am particularly grateful for that service. So do extend my gratitude to the staff that does an outstanding job with that. Look forward to start the raking already. All righty, next item on the agenda is, I'm sorry, any questions here from the council for the manager? City manager? Don't get off easy this evening, sir. The consent agenda, is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded. All those in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none? Unanimous? Thank you very much. And now we will move on to our first item of old business, and our only item. We're looking for adoption of ordinance 0-12-25, amending city code, Chapter 14, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 3, Section 14-17B, speeding monitoring systems to increase the fines for certain violations thereof. So this is eligible for public hearing and action. So we will turn this over to city staff for presentation. Thank you.
So you currently have in place a speed monitoring system ordinance that allows you to use speed cameras in various parts of the city. Last General Assembly session, the legislature increased the maximum fines that you can impose. They're not, the state doesn't set the fines, it simply allows you to set the fines and they have increased those numbers for various levels of speeding. So you will see in your, in the memorandum that accompanies the ordinance, that the fine will remain at $40 for exceeding the speed limit by 12 to 15 miles an hour. If for 16 to 19 miles per hour of the speed limit, it becomes 70. And 20 to 29 miles per hour of the speed limit, 120. 30 to 39 miles per hour over the speed limit, $230. And if the citation alleges that the driver exceeded the speed limit by 40 miles per hour or more, $425.
Excellent. Thank you very much. This is eligible for action and has public hearing component. Madam City Clerk, I'd like to open the public hearing. Do we have anybody signed up to speak?
No, Mayor Protem. There is no one signed up and no comments were received.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So, public hearing is now closed and now I will turn over to my colleagues here who may have questions. If anybody would like to have any comments or questions, anybody here? I see, yes, sir, Mr. Stev.
Hey, Ms. Lavand. So just want to reiterate for the folks at home, the main fine of $40 is not changing.
Correct.
Wonderful.
Sorry, correct.
Great. And just.
Provided you speed at a reasonable.
Fair enough. Fair enough. But if I'm 13 miles over the limit, I'm getting a $40 ticket as I had before?
You?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes.
So just for the folks at home who are aware, we're not increasing the initial fines themselves. Those are going to remain the same. We are, however, I will say this, unrelated to this discussion or related to this discussion, going to continue to look to expand the speed camera program onto more streets. They have been extremely popular. We get mostly emails asking us for more cameras, not fewer. So to the three people who have emailed me complaining about cameras, I'm so sorry. You've lost this one. There's going to be more. And, but the fines themselves are going to remain the same for the time being. Thank you.
Excellent. Councilwoman Rogers?
Thank you. And just to add to what Councilwoman Stev said is that this is a result of Maryland state legislation, not Bowie, where they passed the bill to allow jurisdictions or municipalities to do this with their tickets to go up in the prices. Because I hear a lot from the community about, you know, we do this in order to make more money. And that's not the case. If we're doing our jobs well as citizens, we won't be getting tickets. So I just wanted to add that piece. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rogers. Any other comments? Councilman Brady?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Yeah, I wish we didn't need this program. If it went to zero with infractions and zero with revenue, I would be quite happy with that because it would show that the people are adhering to the law. There was a reference to this was a result of a bill from last session, state legislation, House Bill 182. And at the time, when I was on the legislative committee leading up to the session, it was noted that the big force behind this change in the law was propagated by those that benefit from it, i.e. the contractors that actually do this work, were looking to increase their revenues. But I asked the staff and they made a comment and with regards to this, and they said, "Most of the city's violations fall into Tier 1. Not many fall above that, which would be hit with the increased fees." And more importantly, the comment was that the contractor that we have is paid a flat fee by contract, per camera, per month, no matter how few or how many violations are captured. So at least from our aspect with the way it is implemented in the city, it's not to the benefit to raise the, for the contractor, but rather it's the effort to address this. And I'm hopeful that we will get very few people that end up with speeding tickets that are in Tier 2, Tier 3, and Tier 4. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Councilman Brady. Councilman Trusdale? All right, thank you. Mayor Adams?
You're muted, Mayor.
You're on mute, sir.
I'd just like to add in general to where we are now that this is about safety. Everything we do is about safety here in the city. And know that that's why we do what we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, I will look for, having any go-backs? Hearing none? I'll look for a motion on the matter?
Send it.
I think I have a motion for approval of ordinance 012-25. There's been a proper second. All those in favor with an aye, please?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you all very much and indeed thanks to staff and also to our law enforcement folks who do work so diligently on this effort. It is a big public safety issue for our community. Next item is new business. We have several pieces of new business this evening. Madam City Attorney, do I need to read the full? I suppose I do.
You do.
All right.
Would you like me to read it?
No.
Mr. Mayor, Protem, would you like me to read it quickly?
I'll read it through and then we'll go from there. All right, here we go. All right, first item for new business is adoption of resolution R97-25, authorizing the city of Bowie, the city, to issue and sell two separate series of its general obligation bonds pursuant to the authority described herein. Such series of bonds to be respectively designated the City of Bowie Public Improvement Bonds, Series 2025A, tax exempt, the tax exempt bonds, and the City of Bowie Public Improvement Bonds, Series 2025B, federally taxable, known as taxable bonds, and collectively within the tax exempt bonds, the bonds. The proceeds of the sale thereof to be used for and applied for the public purposes of financing or reimbursing costs of the projects described herein and costs of issuance, as authorized by ordinance 0-925 identified herein, all as further described herein, describing the forms and tenor of the bonds and terms and conditions of the issuance and sale thereof at public sale by solicitation of competitive bids, including the substantially final form of the notice, sale, and other details incident to the issuance, sale and delivery of the bonds, authorizing the city manager to determine certain matters provided for herein in connection with the sale of the bonds, authorizing and approving the preparation, distribution, or preliminary and final official statement in connection with the sale of the bonds, and any supplements or amendments thereto, designating a bond registrar and paying agent for the bonds and providing for an agreement with such entity, authorizing the preparation, execution, and delivery of a continuing disclosure undertaken pursuant to SEC Rule 15C2-12, covenanting to provide continuing disclosure relating to the bonds, providing for the appropriation, disbursement, investment of the proceeds of the bonds, providing for the imposition of any taxes necessary for the payment of debt service on the bonds, pledging the full faith and credit and unlimited taxing power of the city to the payment of such debt service, providing that debt service on the bonds also may be paid from any other lawfully available sources of revenue, making or providing for certain covenants, determination, and designations relating to the tax exempt status of the tax exempt bonds, providing that the provisions of this resolution shall be liberally construed and generally relating to the issuance, sale, delivery, and payment of and for the bonds authorized hereby. This is eligible for action.
Well done.
There we have it. I'll turn to staff for presentation and discussion.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Daniel Mears, Assistant City Manager for the city. As Mayor Protem thoroughly reviewed for us, we have before us issuance of general obligation bonds, two series intended for the ice arena and for utility infrastructure as well. This evening, we are joined by the city's financial advisor, Jennifer Dirksen with Davenport, and also the city's bond council, Lindsay Raider with Funk and Bolton. And Lindsay's going to start off letting us know what all that meant.
Yes, and that title does actually summarize it fairly well, even though it is a 63-page resolution. But beyond that, several of the key points that are not actually spelled out in the title. We will have two series of bonds. The maximum principal amount of the two series cannot exceed $33 million. The resolution provides for a preliminary amortization schedule for each series of the bonds and delegates authority to the city manager with the input from the Director of Finance, Bond Council, and the city's financial advisor, the ability to change those amortization schedules prior to the sale of the bonds. schedules prior to the sale of the bonds for a variety of reasons, including to react to any changes in market conditions. We are currently anticipating selling the bonds on Tuesday, November 4th, and closing on Wednesday, November 19th. The amortization schedule for the tax-exempt series provides for an almost 20-year amortization with the last maturity being on July 1, 2045, and the amortization for the taxable series being almost 30 years and ending on July 1, 2055. There's a lot of what I would refer to as boilerplate, but important boilerplate in here, and the key provisions of that boilerplate are both the pledge of the city's full faith and credit and unlimited taxing power to pay debt service on both series of the bonds, and with regard to the tax-exempt series, the covenants to take the necessary actions or not to undertake omissions that could adversely impact the tax-exempt status of those series. The bond registrar and paying agent that's designated is Zions Bank Corporation, which is currently serving as the bond registrar and paying agent for the city's publicly offered general obligation bonds that were issued in 2019. And we are happy to answer any questions.
Excellent, thank you very much. Anything further, Mr. Mears?
To summarize it a little bit further, we are going to be issuing two pieces of debt, borrowing money, and we'll be paying it back over time.
Excellent, thank you very much. I will turn the floor over to my colleagues here for questions and comments. Start down, Mr. Estev.
I'll just speak very briefly on this. So, this has been a project that the city's been working on now since, oh, I think the first meetings I saw on this were back in 2013. And this is part of a series of conversations about what to do about our aging amenities in the city. We have a senior center, we have a golf course, we have an indoor gym, we have an ice arena, we have a couple of recreation centers, we maintain a lot of ballfields, a lot of parks. Every single one of these facilities is used more or less regionally. We audited over the years, every facility we offer, there's not a single one that's used principally by Bowie residents, even though all these facilities are predominantly subsidized by city Bowie residents. Our oldest amenity and the one that is the most beleaguered at the moment is the City of Bowie Ice Arena. It's needed to be replaced for about 10 years now. We went back and forth as a council on a couple of different projects and a couple of different locations. Ultimately, we settled last year on moving forward with a one-for-one replacement. So, this is about taking our existing ice arena, which has been around for about half a century and needed to be replaced about 10 years ago and is costing us more and more money to maintain, and it's about closing down that arena in about two years, but in the intervening time, building a new facility that we anticipate with modern technology not being 60 years old and with better design, knowing now what we know with 60 years of experience running a single-sheet ice arena, this amenity we expect will cost very little money for us to actually maintain, and with a higher rate structure for using the facility that mostly places the burden on non-resident users, we anticipate that this new amenity will cost very little money to actually run. So, in the long term, we'll be saving money on operation costs while maintaining an existing one-for-one amenity. We're going to have to have the same conversations in the near future about the city gym, about the senior center, about a lot of the amenities we have, but for right now, we're starting with this one because it is the oldest and is needed replacing for the longest period of time. This is a very well-used amenity, it's loved, we have a ton of Bowie residents who use it, we have a lot of guests who come from outside the city who use it. The new location by the Bowie Golf Course was one that was chosen because it fits very well with the existing golf course next door. There's overflow parking at the golf course. When the ice arena has its slow season, the golf course tends to have its busy season. When the ice arena has its busy season, the golf course tends to have its slow season. So, it's excellent synergy. It's also in a quarter where we're trying to get more people to come and shop. We have a couple of shopping centers in that area where we're looking forward to having some extra foot traffic. So, this is a good location. We know it's not perfect. We've had a number of public meetings where we've done our best, I think, as a city to hear and address resident concerns. Overall, though, having done this now in the full 10 years that I've been on this body, I can say with a high level of certainty, this is a good choice, this is a good location, and this is a pretty reasonable price, about $10 million below, I think, what we anticipated having to spend. So, all in all, I'm grateful that we are at this stage, and I look forward to moving forward with this project and then immediately turning around in a couple of years and looking at how we're going to address our other facilities as well in time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Estev. Mr. Adams, Mayor Adams?
Hey, thank you. I just want to comment on that as well because we, as a council, decided was that we would be building the new ice arena and then tearing down the old ice arena and putting up, we've also been putting off and trying to do, and that is to build the new indoor courts on the same site as the old ice arena. So, I do want the citizens to know that we are moving forward, and this is to support our community. Even though they're used widely by others as well, we know that our gym is totally packed and we came to this as a way of making sure that we continue to get the community needs met, and that being for whatever recreational sport they choose to, and in this case, it was the ice rink, and right following it would be the indoor basketball courts. And so, I think it's a good move for the council as well, as we look at getting these bonds out and being able to have the financial wherewithal to do those things that can really support our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anybody else? Councilwoman Rogers?
Yeah, thank you for that, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mayor Protam. One thing I just wanted to mention, because during these times of uncertainty, people are always concerned about the level of risk that you take, particularly, you know, in the bond market, but I just wanted to, and I'll have staff reemphasize, or at least, you know, say a little bit more about it. When you, I think municipal bonds are one of the most safest bonds, and then when you structure it for repayment over, you know, 20, 30-year period, that even decreases the risk as well. And so, I just wanted you guys to kind of reaffirm that or at least, you know, touch on it, because I know people are concerned about financial aspects of, you know, running government. So, anything you want to share, I'd appreciate it, and thank you.
Hi, good evening. Jennifer Dirksen, financial advisor to the city. You are very correct, it is a safe investment. You know, also, the bonds are, we'll be getting ratings from each of the rating agencies. The city currently has AAA ratings from all three, and we would expect that all three should be affirmed. And so, that really speaks to the risk that is present in the upcoming bonds with the highest rating. The rating agencies really view this as, you know, very little risk associated with this upcoming issuance. In addition, in terms of the market, the market has been holding in even with the federal shutdown and everything going on of the federal government. We've seen rates since I last was here at the beginning of September, when we first spoke about the bond issuance, rates have actually come down, particularly on the back end, a little bit up on the front end, but overall down. So, I think you, the city's bond should get a good reception from the underwriting community.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rogers. Councilman Trusdale?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Well, you just answered my question in terms of my colleague, in terms of the safe investment. That is very important with, you know, the amenities leaving from one area to another is of importance as well, that, you know, that we make sure that there's something in it for District 3, per se, and where the existing ice rink is. You know, we do have some young people in our communities that lack, in terms of time and effort, being able to go to the gymnasium where it is. So, thank you for answering my question earlier, and Councilwoman Rogers, thank you for asking that question. But at the same time, my main concern is that we have enough amenities for our youth in the community. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Trusdale. Councilman Brady?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Couple of quick questions, it's staff. What is our current bond rating? We are currently rated AAA through all three rating agencies. Okay. And taking on this additional debt, will that possibly jeopardize our bond rating?
No, sir.
Okay, I did not think so, but this whole project started in April budget hearings in 2014, so we're coming up on 12 years since we started talking about replacing the old aging ice rinks. And I believe it's about 53 or 54 years old. It's well beyond its useful life. And I can tell you that back in '14, when I actually made the motion to replace the ice rink, at the time, I told the Bowie Hockey Club and some of the other users that if we did not have the ice rink as an amenity, I don't believe I could have supported an ice rink. But the ice rink and the gymnasium and the senior center and the different museums and all the fields and courts and everything that we have is what makes Bowie special. So, we ought not just let them age and fall apart and do away with them just because we don't want to keep them up and maintain them. So, I think this is a valuable expenditure, an important expenditure, to maintain the quality of life aspect of the City of Bowie. So, I am fully supportive in moving forward on this bond issue. Thank you, Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Councilwoman Brady. I think we're all set. Any other questions or comments? All right, I'd like to thank staff for all your due diligence on this. It's no quick effort or short in terms of long timeframe here. We've been working this long time, so thank you very much. I'm looking for a motion for approval.
In making the motion, do I have to read the whole title?
I think adoption of Resolution R...
So, I will move approval of an adoption of Resolution R97-25.
Thank you. There's been properly moved and seconded. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. We will now move on to the next item on our agenda, and this is in regards to the Bowie Center for the Performing Arts. This evening, we have Mr. Chris Dwyer with us, who will discuss with council possible partnering for future events. Mr. Dwyer, please come on down and join us at the microphone. Please raise it up so people can hear you at home, and I think you have a presentation. Let's see if it's going to work.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protam, and distinguished council members. My name is Christopher Dwyer, and I am with the Bowie Center for the Performing Arts. I'm the executive director of the Bowie Center for the Performing Arts, and I just wanted to touch base, well, first of all, I am a proud citizen of Bowie, Maryland, and a lot of these amenities that you've been discussing are things that myself and my family actually get to take part in. I know my wife was really into ice skating, so she's been there several times. So, if you want to put a name with the face of someone and a family that appreciates these amenities and uses these amenities, I am one of the many thousand people that do so. There is an additional amenity here in Bowie, Maryland, called the Bowie Center for the Performing Arts, and while the City of Bowie is not the primary stakeholder, we are a secondary stakeholder of this wonderful facility that I have the honor of being the executive director of. So, I've prepared a short presentation for everyone to be able to see and kind of go talk a little bit about some of the things that we're looking for in the future and some of the struggles that we're having currently. So, there's a couple of buttons here, I'm going to push one and hope it works. Oh, it's a laser. Oh, yes. All right, so real quickly, and I'm going to try to keep this to five minutes, we're going to talk about our impact on the community, our biggest challenges, the BCPA inflation report, BCPA request for additional funding, resurgence of the Bowie Regional Arts Vision Association, and the BCPA project status. So, our impact on the local economy, as you might have guessed, we impact local restaurants, bars, and shopping centers whenever we have events. Places experience more foot traffic in Bowie in general. I know that the Texas Roadhouse is always wanting to know when we have events so they can staff properly. So, there is a positive trickle-down effect when it comes to the amount of events that we have at the BCPA. So, to talk a little bit about what a gentleman discussed at the beginning of the meeting, we're interested in making Bowie a destination, so attracting patrons who especially want to come to Bowie to see comedy. That has been one thing that has been really big and monthly at the Bowie Center for the Performing Arts. And then also, the local dance companies, places like Star Makers Dance, which is really important in the fabric of our youth here in Bowie, and they have been a fantastic contributor, and we're fortunate that they partner with us to do almost all of their productions at our facility. And while these young people are at our facility, they are also students of Prince George's County Public Schools, so that is our primary stakeholder, and together, we are sending our students to the schools, which is why I live in Bowie. It was, you know, we were very impressed with the City of Bowie and the school system, and I think it's a really wonderful partnership that we've established. So, we have become one of Prince George's County's most active facilities, just due to the usage of the school system and the community in general. We are a cultural hub of Prince George's County, and we support all the different cultural initiatives and performances that happen at our facility. So, I don't just come to the city saying that we need help. I go to the state saying that we need help. I go to Prince George's County Public Schools saying that we need some help. I've hired someone who works with us, we write grants together, we've been receiving grants from the county council. I do not just put all my eggs in one basket and expect the city or the school system or whoever to be the only ones to work with us. So, the biggest challenges is our aging infrastructure, is the maintenance and repair under budget constraints, a joint-use agreement that did not account for inflation, and we'll get to that a little bit, I'll get to more on that in a little bit, modernization of technology for a facility with limited funding, and a requirement to operate as a business within the confines of a school system, and I'll expand on that a little bit later. So, in its 20th year of operation, this is about maintenance and repair. We anticipate substantial capital needs, including repairs, replacements, and modernization of theatrical systems over the next two, five, and 10 years. Our biggest need is a roof, and that's sort of a domino effect. When we get a roof, we can then say, "Okay, now we can replace the carpet," because there's no sense in replacing a roof if it's just going to get rained on, and then we can continue to go down the line with bathroom renovations and things like that. So, how can we establish a partnership between the state, county, city, and PGCPs to maintain our current facility? Number two, we have had a stagnant budget after 20 years of operation. Although the BCPA's budget has not grown in two decades, which is the truth, we have had the same budget for 20 years. Expenses have soared, an example being, minimum wage in the state of Maryland is now $15 an hour, whereas in 2005, there actually wasn't a state-required minimum wage, and that federal wage was $5.15. How does the BCPA get past an MOU that has limited its funding and not accounted for inflation? Because inflation is a real thing, we hear about it all the time. So, operating as a business within the structure of a school system, while PGCPs brings deep experience and education, its familiarity... experience in education, its familiarity with the entertainment industry's evolving business practices is a little bit limited. So when I'm going through approval processes, the first question I get is, well, don't you belong to the city of Bowie? It's like, well, no, not exactly. Um, you know, well, I, I don't understand what this is. Well, you're used to working with schools, with schools, not necessarily what's going on, um, in, in the entertainment and business community. Because it's not well-understood, securing entertainment and facility upgrades is often challenging. So how can the city of Bowie and PG CPS collaborate to help the BCPA become more self-sufficient in the business community? And I have some answers to that question, but I'm gonna leave that open-ended right now. So 2005 budget was 480,000, 2026 is 490. So technically, there has been a $10,000 increase in the budget, which was a 2% increase from PG CPS. But according to the CPI inflation calendar, um, $480,000 in 2005 has the same buying power as $800,000, which is a 60% inflationary increase. And there is where we get into trouble, because the actual cost to get some of the things has grown astronomically, and we're sort of stuck in the same spot. So the Bowie Center for the Performing Arts is requesting a 25% to 35% increase in city funding to account for the following: a 60% decrease in buying power, offset the rise of minimum, uh, wage and the federal wage, partially fund modernization product, uh, projects and technology upgrades. So like I said, we don't just talk to the city of Bowie. I'm out here working with a lot of different organizations. And one of the founding organizations that helped get the, got the Bowie Center for the Performing Arts built is the Bowie Regional Arts Vision Association. And it was established somewhere around 1996 to actually get the building built. Um, they brokered a lot of deals, they worked with a lot of people, and it was really amazing that the Bowie Center for the Performing Arts even exists as it is today. And in the last four months, we've worked to reestablish BRAVA as the community wing of the Bowie Center for the Performing Arts. By serving as the BCPA's fiscal sponsor, we are now able to apply for grants, um, that are only designated for 501(c)(3) organizations. So I'm out there, I am working, and we're fortunate today to have some of the founding members of BRAVA and current members of BRAVA here supporting today with President, President Verna Teesdale, executive board member Millie Hall, and there's also Sheila Whiteman, Karen Williamson, Tony Adams, and Valerie Dubriel, who've done a lot of work. Their updated mission statement, which was voted on and ratified just this past week, is that they are here to be the community wing of the Bowie Center for the Performing Arts, so that we can begin to expand our, our wings and our search for adequate funding for our building and for future sustainability. So that's a lot of what I am here to talk about today. So I've got a couple of projects that are underway. So we had handrail installation, which was something that was really requested by the Bowie Senior Center. They came to us, they have their senior corral. It's a, it's a huge selling event, too. They are saying that we have a treacherous balcony, so recently we had handrails installed, paid for by BCPA revenue. A marquee replacement is supposed to be happening, will be happening November 11th. That is paid for with BCPA revenue. So we have HVAC that PG CPS and BCPA will be working on. The roof replacement is on hold, and that is the biggest challenge that we face. I won't go into details on that, but it is on hold. HVAC replacement in the main hall and carpet replacement once those dominoes fall. So that is where we are with our project status update, and I believe that a 25% to a 35% increase in city funding will help us in the following ways, but I'm going to jump over to number three, because I've already talked about one and two. Other stakeholders will be more inclined to come to the table and appropriately fund the BCPA. If the city of Bowie says, hey, we support, which you all do, I mean, I'm incredibly thankful for what the city has done for this facility, and, and I want you all to know that I'm here and I will advocate for this facility, um, as a citizen of Bowie. You know, it's, it's, it's a dream come true for me to be at that facility and to, to advocate for my community, just the way that you all advocate for, for your districts. But I think that our stakeholders have already, I've already told PG CPS I'm coming to have this talk, and they said, great, let me know how it goes. So I hope to report positive news, and, um, I thank all of you for your time and appreciation. We're gonna be here, we're gonna be doing our thing. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer. If you could, if you'd, uh, stay here for a few moments while we, uh, have an opportunity to, uh, ask questions and discuss a little bit more in detail. But first, I'd like to turn over to staff. Does, uh, is there any comment or discussion from staff on the subject?
No, sir. We don't, we don't have any discussion on this one. I mean, if, I mean, if, if the council wants to, right now, I think it was an $80,000 annual donation, correct? And, uh, that was agreed upon 20, 20-plus years ago. It was up to the council to increase that. And, uh, of course, uh, you all are two months away from your budget process when that, when that opportunity could arise, and, uh, so...
Excellent. Thank you, sir. All right. Uh, I'm gonna start with, uh, one just real quick question. Uh, have you had any conversations with folks about, uh, the possibility of just renegotiating the MOU altogether?
Um, so I recently had a budget meeting with PG CPS last week, and when the talk of increasing funding came up, that was the first thing they said. They said, okay, well, there may need to be a new MOU or an amendment to that MOU or a renegotiation of it altogether. So that was mentioned, that has come up.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. I will now, uh, turn over to the, to my colleagues here for, uh, questions, thoughts, comments. Uh, anybody? There ain't nothing here on this end. We'll start with Mr. Councilman Steph.
Mr. Member Protem. First, I just want to say thank you to Mr. Dwyer, and I see members of BRAVA in the audience, Ms. Hall, Ms. Teesdale, Mr. Teesdale. Um, and you mentioned Ms. Williamson, some of the others who are engaged. Um, I guess a few things. So just reiterating, so it sounds like we basically have been committing $80,000 a year to BCPA. That's the dollar amount we agreed to two decades ago, and we really haven't changed it. And most of your other stakeholders have not changed their financial commitments either, in spite of the fact that it costs 60% more just in dollar value to run this than it did, um, um, when this started. That, that sounds like the basic problem.
Okay.
Correct. The second problem, it sounds like, is that there are a lot of capital projects, which you've already invested in, mostly ADA-related, mostly, it sounds like demanded by Bowie residents themselves and our senior center in our community, and you don't necessarily have a special fund for those capital projects. Those are all coming out of your operating budget.
Okay.
So first off, it's incredible that the Bowie Center for the Performing Arts is doing as well as it's doing, given that it's had, um, completely, uh, fixed operating budget and capital expenses. I, I don't know how you've managed to do that. Like, are you operating entirely on volunteers right now? Or are you working for free? Or like, I like, have you just, is there? What, what magic have you found? Because that, that seems kind of extraordinary.
We do have an additional source of revenue, which is from our rentals, um, which is sort of why I discussed that the school system's expertise isn't necessarily in making revenue. Right now, our only option is to rent the facility, whereas the difference is if we are to produce more events, we can then make ticket revenue, which $4,000 or $5,000 is typically going to be a rental. A, um, ticket revenue can be anywhere between $20,000 and $30,000, and that's my, my goal.
Gotcha. And my understanding is you guys have been doing a lot more rentals lately, um, and you've had a lot of success bringing in a lot more ticketed events?
Yes. Um, despite the amount of cars that you may see in the parking lot at BCPA events, we're basically making the same amount of money every single time, between four and five.
Okay. Gotcha. Um, so, and you basically, it looks like, have a detailed list of new capital projects that need to be funded. You know what your operating expenses are gonna be next year, and you're basically going to all of your stakeholders and saying, hey, can we up the commitment a certain percentage so that we can basically deal with these projects, keep the lights on, make sure we maintain this, uh, community amenity essentially?
Yeah, that's exactly what we're doing. And then we're going outside of our stakeholders as well, um, to work with bond bill initiatives, which we did get a bond bill for our marquee replacement. Um, we have gotten grants, uh, from the county council, um, from District Four, and we have interest from some of the other council members and some of the, the, um, adjacent districts, like District Six. I know, um, Wala Boulay has expressed an interest in keeping the Bowie Center, um, going as a vital cultural impact here in Prince George's County. So, uh, again, I'm making the rounds. I'm going outside the stakeholders, because, um, I feel like that's the right thing to do.
Gotcha. Um, so it sounds like you really are knocking on all doors. You're not just coming to us. Okay. Um, knowing what we spend on some other amenities, the, the, the fact that we have not made a, at least an inflationary commitment, um, is kind of incredible. Um, so, uh, yeah, personally, I, I, I don't see this being an unreasonable request at all, given what we're putting in other amenities that, that don't produce the same level of, of, um, you know, community value that you guys necessarily do. We don't really have kind of a major art or entertainment center in the center of town. We have, um, uh, the art gallery at the Bowie Town Center, which does really well, but you guys are kind of our other, like, our only main game in town, as far as being like a, a proper hosting venue in the middle of Bowie. Um, so I really appreciate your coming, and these are all my questions I have for now.
Thank you, Councilman Steph. Anybody else? Councilman Rogers?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So being a student of the arts, where I love entertainment, it, just talking about this makes me happy. Singing and dancing makes me happy. As I told you in my other life, I wanted to be like a Broadway performer, to sing and dance. So this makes me happy. Um, and I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for inflationary costs, and I'm 100% behind that. Now that you have your 501(c)(3), right? I think that will even be more helpful, because now you can actually do fundraisers, and I'd be happy to sing and dance.
Let's go.
Or at least host, you know, to help out with fundraisers, because once the community starts to engage in you, and now that you have the vehicle, I think people will start coming and giving. Only, the one question I have is around the roof and Prince George's County Public School System and their, their commitment. So are they the ones talking about, they're talking about maybe looking at the MOU? Or what is PG CPS doing?
Um, looking at the MOU did come up last week.
Oh, okay.
It was just a question on if, if they are to increase funding, uh, on their end, does there have to be a new MOU created?
Oh, okay.
Which seems like it would get a lot of lawyers involved, and that's not my expertise. Mine is more along singing and dancing.
Dancing, okay, I got you. Okay, thank you. I just needed that clarity. But thank you for being here, and thank you for what you did.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rogers. Um, Mayor Adams?
Mayor Protem.
Mayor Adams?
Yeah, it's, uh, thank you for being here, Chris. I, I think I want to make sure that, one of the things we need to understand is that, uh, I think it is quite reasonable, uh, what's being asked, i.e. for inflation. But also, if I go back to something that I, I really, uh, always try to hammer home is, we're not just looking for something for cosmetics here. When Chris come here and when we talk about, uh, the Bowie Performing Arts Center, we're talking about safety as well. So it's about having the, the financial resources to make sure that, that we take care of those issues, those places, that we can be prevented when it comes to safety. Not that the Bowie, uh, Center for the Performing Arts would ever allow anyone to be in, in harm's way. By no means am I suggesting that. But I think it's a reasonable request. I think it's important that we, uh, move forward with it. I'm someone who has seen, uh, the, the results of the Performing Arts Center. I've seen, uh, young people who have grown and crafted their art. I, I see those who, who rent the facility now. So I, I think it's important that we keep it a, a touchstone, a place where, uh, people can remember when, when they did their dance programs and other things. So I, I think, uh, it's, 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 it's a, a request that's reasonable, but I also know that, uh, they have been seeking all types of financial support as well, and not just us. So I say kudos to that and continue, uh, making those efforts and making those pushes to get the desired resources, uh, to keep the Performing Arts Center up to standard, but more importantly, to make it a, a destination point, as you say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Adams. Any other questions? Councilman Truesdale?
Thank you, thank you, uh, Mayor Protem. Uh, thank you, Chris, for this, uh, presentation. Um, there, there's times, um, I, I come to, to your office and, you know, I'm a pianist, if, you know, if people don't know, and he, he allowed me to play on that, uh, baby grand, uh, during my lunch break sometime, you know, um, being in Bowie. So, um, I, I, I think that it's, um, um, it's, it's definitely needed. Um, I, I, I do want to, um, kind of get the information in terms of, as a city, we, we donate every year. I think the last person, I think the only person that's been on the council 20 years since, you know, since day one is probably my colleague right here, um, Brady. But in terms of, I think that there should be an increase. But at the same time, you know, what does that looks like? Um, we're, we're probably the only, if not PG, Prince George's County, um, are the consistent donors. And so, um, I'm, I'm with, um, in terms of understanding, you know, how we can financially, uh, support the efforts at the same time move forward, um, with, um, supporting financially. All right. So I don't have a question, just a statement. Thank you much.
Thank you, Councilman Truesdale. Councilman Brady?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Let me read for something real quickly. Ah, sorry. Something eerie happened today. I, the mail arrived and there was a package, and it was probably the most secure and well-wrapped package I've ever received and triple, double wrapped and, uh, it took me a while to open it. And then I opened it, it's kind of ironic, because it's titled, "Pillars of the Arts: The Creation of BCPA."
What?
It's the book by Gordon Stewart. He sent me a copy, and pardon me for a minute. 2002, and it is on there.
Oh, yeah, he is, man. Wow.
So I recall much of the early activity on this, and it, uh, it goes back to the 70s, really, when, um, can't remember his name, on the Board of Education. He, uh, got the, um, auditorium added to the, to the budget for the high school, but that's all that ever happened. He kept it, uh, on, but there was never any action. And then a group came together and formed BRAVA and, and started pushing for it. We came together, coalesced. Senator Green, the late Senator Peters, a lot of people stepped forward to, to move this project forward, because we visioned it as kind of a centerpiece for the city, if you will, especially a cultural centerpiece. So it was very valuable. Um, it's unfortunate that the two, um, groups, the city and Park and Planning, have never adjusted their contributions. The city has been $80,000 since day one, Park and Planning is $400,000. Um, and there was never, included in the original documents was not an escalator clause. Um, I will caution, uh, remembering back with all the negotiations over the MOU, and it, it was challenging. It was hard fought to get, I believe the city has 14 days allocated to the city. In the formula, not only a, a contribution from the city and Park and Planning, but there's also an allocation to the different organization. And, uh, we had a fight for that. And my concern is that if we resurrect discussion and negotiate the MOU, that a lot of the things that we have may be subject to be cut. So I'd be a little concerned over that. But I think it's, it's something we do need to do and move forward on in order to get a, a better, um, future for the, for the facility. It's a gem. It could be a much larger gem if we just do the right thing with it. And I'm disappointed, I'll say, to hear of the lack of, uh, commitment from the Prince George's County School System with regards to the leaking roof. Those are typically... Those are typically indicators of a problem with the structure, and those are the kind of problems that you don't delay and you don't ignore because they just get worse and they have the potential of accelerating the degradation of the structure of the building. So I hope we can come up with a way to do that. The 25% to 35% increase you're talking about would take our $80,000 to $100,000 and $108,000. I would not have a problem raising that in the next budget cycle to $125,000, leveraging the same percentage change from Park and Planning so that we can start addressing some of that. I think with what you're doing with resurrecting Braava and looking at the tax-exempt status and all, you may be able to leverage some of the public dollars in order to get some of the contributions that you need to move this forward. But it's absolutely a wonderful place. I was glad to be a part of the effort to get it built, and I enjoy going when I can get over there. So I wish you well, and what we can do, we will. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Brady. Any go-bags? Mayor Adams?
Yeah, just for full disclosure, I do want to make sure that I share that I know Chris and I has been trying to get Park and Planning engaged. I have sat in on meetings with Park and Planning and also on the restructuring, I guess, of Braava and making sure that there was a good board in place. So those kind of discussions are going on, and I have been a part of that. So I do want to make sure that we are aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, so let me take a moment here to summarize so that you have a little something to take back, I think, that we could kind of collectively agree with, which is that, you know, we as a body, I think, are supportive of not just a 10% or 20% increase in the numbers, but actually meeting what the number would be inflation-adjusted, with the understanding that we would like to see the same thing from the other parties to the original agreement or MOU, and that we ought to be looking for the same sort of contribution. And hopefully, we could have, you know, broader discussions with those parties and perhaps working with Braava, with our staff, and with members of the council, the mayor, trying to leverage some political support as well for, you know, additional attention from the school, perhaps our school board members, and we could have some conversations there. I think that, you know, as a general thing that you can, you know, take back with you is that we are here in support of that, and I think everybody here agrees with that position here. So I thank you for being here. I thank you for the good work that you and your team do for the community, and I know you think it's fun and it's all part of having a great job, but the reality is it's great for the community as well, and so we are appreciative. We are appreciative even if you are having a good time doing the good work. So thank you very much, and we'll look to make adjustments for our budget for the coming year, and we will look collectively to help you have discussions with the rest of the members. And if that, and it may be best to do, you know, a renegotiated MOU under the basic same terms, but just changing the dollar amounts, and we may be able to go back to, you know, Park and Planning, which typically doesn't do annual, you know, allotments, and instead take a look at some component and ask them for a single contribution for a capital expense. Maybe it's something that gets in and say, hey, Park and Planning, can you pony up the money for the roof if the school system cannot? But if we keep that in mind, I think we're all with you here and very supportive and appreciative of the efforts. So thank you.
Thank you, Council. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you again, Mr. Dwyer. Now we'll turn to the next item on the agenda, grant resources for federal employees for government shutdown. I will turn this over to city staff for a preliminary introductory discussion.
Mayor Protem, the, Mayor Adams contacted the staff and asked that we work up a plan using a $1 million as a base that could help provide resources in various ways for the government, federal employees who are suffering during this government shutdown and firings and all that sort of thing. So Mr. Bugs got the assignment, and he's going to brief you all on what we have, and we've come up with, and then we'll hand it back to the mayor.
Thank you. Good evening, Jesse Bugs. I'm the director of the Grants Office for the City of Bowie, and as the city manager said, I've been asked to provide some information that might be helpful to make a decision about how you're going to move forward. My office manages generally all of those kinds of resources historically for the past 20 years as a relation of providing assistance to this part of the population that has these kind of issues. Before I do that, I would be remiss if I didn't say for the gentleman who just left, my son Nicholas joined someone by the name of Verna Teasdale many years ago. He represented the student body boot high school when they went before the state legislature to testify about the need for this facility at the school. They were joined by another group of young men who created a song that they actually sang before the legislature. My son did a poem and said some other things, and as he went off to Vanderbilt Engineering School, the group that sang the song also went to Nashville, and my son served as their agent booking, getting them bookings while he was in engineering school in Vanderbilt. But we're pleased that the facility exists, and I'm sure you all will do what you need to do to make sure it continues to be a profitable functioning activity here. Now, back to why I'm here. The issue, as you all know, is an acute one for a number of people in our community. We have a presentation there you can put up if you like. I'm going to summarize it just for the sake of brevity and time, as the city managers asked me not to go into great detail with all statistics related to the problems we have in the region. But I did just want to say to you, read to you something I sent out to others today, and the esteemed finance director was talking to me about the gravity of what I sent out today, and that Maryland has one of the highest foreclosure rates in the nation. Actually, it's ranked number five in the nation. It ranks above Pennsylvania, Delaware, Virginia, West Virginia, and it places it at the top of foreclosure rates for the region jointly between Baltimore City and Prince George's County, represents nearly 40% of all the foreclosure rates in the entire state. And, you know, that's a dramatic, drastic set of statistics just that you have some information about the kind of situation we are in today. I'm getting more information about specific impact on zip codes in our area, and I'll get that to you when we get it. There have been, as you know, a target since January of this year to get rid of 300,000 employees from the federal government, and they have been working aggressively to do that, and they've closed a lot of agencies, fired a lot of people. Now we're in a furlough situation, and 4200 people furloughed got notices that they were going to be fired. That stuff is tied up in the courts. We won't go into that now, but the issue of partial paychecks has already resulted in a number of employees. I was just with some employees before I came here from the FBI who, only agents are being paid and none of the rest of the employees are being paid. So they're all working without it, and a number of them live in the city. Slide three here, we show the share of workers here. We have over 5,400 federal workers in the city of Bowie. The question was asked to me, can I make sure that all those are within the zip codes within the corporate boundary? They cannot at this point, but maybe we'll be able to do that. But given the loss of jobs, over 15,000 of those who have been terminated in the state of Maryland, and the current administration is working aggressively to terminate as many more as they can. So we have to be cognizant of the fact that we have a large number of federal employees in the city, in the county and in the city, who are already furloughed and are terminated that we need to be concerned with. The next slide just shows information from COG that points out the data that I gave you about the 5,400 people in Bowie, and if you want to go deeper into that, there's several other layers of information that we can provide to you. As we have done over the past several years, what we do every day is respond to emergency assistance requests from residents of the city. You can see there the number of different ways that we respond to that. We get calls 24/7, emails, texts, and everything else from a large number of the population. The largest increase in population, and we're dealing with now seniors who have obviously, because of cost increases and other matters, of being displaced from all the places they live, and the four or five places in the city that have a large number of seniors, we're dealing with that. So in addition to all the other areas you see there, as with the fire that took place at the condominiums behind here, we are the ones who have the funds in this office to provide assistance for them. So we paid for people to be relocated. We paid their first month's rent as well as security departments to get them where they need to be. Right now, we're dealing with a similar situation with the number of calls we're getting every day, and I'm sure you all are getting them too with this large number of people who are furloughed. For us right now, we just have, in the budget, I think, enjoys my correct, as I said, $10,000. Is that close to correct?
Yes.
Yeah, closer to $10,000. And then we have another $10,000 we got from the county council, thanks to our council member, Ingrid Watson. And then we just, last week, got a notice for an application we submitted. I asked for $50,000, they gave us 40, it's actually 42,500 that we are submitting information on now. So we get another 42,500 that will be allocated to us within the next probably three or four weeks. So that is the resource base that we have right now in my office to pay for folks who have all kinds of problems and issues. We pay for folks who come to us with issues that we try to evaluate and determine what their needs are. I would say in the past few weeks or so, we've paid to keep folks, seniors in Evergreen, single women with children in the apartment complexes they're in, and some other issues. As we go to talk about other resources that are being provided, the state, county, county council, and others are providing a wide range of resources and access to resources that they have on their websites. I won't take the time now clicking through this to show you, but they're rather extensive. A lot of them relate to counseling and other kinds of what other people are doing as opposed to any resources technically, financially, otherwise that are coming from the council or from the government. They're just referring them to folks. So that's a lot of what that is. The Council of Governments had an extensive website also that's very good. And then we go to the utilities. They're doing the best. So WSSC had a series of programs out when they had the race dealing with domestic violence here the other day. I had an opportunity to talk with the staff at WSSC, and they informed me, look, in three days, the commission is going to vote on something that I think you all will be pleased with, and they did. $2.3 million they put into a fund where they have several programs, one of which you can, if you will, able to pay 50% of your bill, they will forgive the other 50%. If you pay 25%, they will forgive 25% with other kinds, not forgive the rest, but certain kind of things. BG&E has programs, Washington Gas has programs to help with utility bills. A lot of that is not forgiving, it is delaying that or making your loan so that you can move forward. We go to the COG website, it is very extensive, and there are others. This consortium of universities, the Capillary Food Bank, you probably heard yesterday that they just got a major injection of funding to go out to get more food. The problem is the farmers are having their problems because of other things that are going on, so they're having problems because they haven't produced the food even to supply to the food banks. But anyway, that's kind of working its way through. For us, the, we're here tonight just to say that the proposal that came to us is if the council decided to come up with whatever amount of money is going to come up, 500,000, million, or 100,000, is that we would be able to create a fund to manage it. The issue related to that kind of, that level of fund management is who is capacity. While we here at the city and my staff, we've done, you know, during COVID, $300,000, $400,000 that we moved through from the federal government to provide food. When everybody else shut down, my office never shut down throughout COVID. We provided food giveaway programs almost every month, and we use the students from Bowie High School where we gave them their community service hours to work with us. And there's this gentleman up here who's smiling on the council who came out at one of our sessions to help distribute food for us, Councilman Wuffley. And so we did several of those. The churches and other institutions enabled us to use their facilities to distribute the food. We gave, the kids came out, we masked them up, gloved them up, you know, gave them sanitizer and everything, but we did supply over $400,000 worth of food and rental assistance to residents in the city of Bowie. The majority of the people we did therefore were mostly single women with children living in apartment buildings, but then others who had mortgage payments and other things. So we have the knowledge and skill sets to do that, but the only way we could do that and get it out effectively and efficiently, as Kay mentioned in our budget meeting earlier today, is that we rely on our partners and other resources to help us to get that done since we did it so efficiently, to be, to brag on my staff, more efficiently than the county and other places in the region, that we, they took money from other places and gave us some of the money to distribute to our residents. So there were two separate tranches of money that we got that came to us because mothers didn't do their job, that we were then able to give the money to the residents of the city. So we have the procedural expertise, we have the knowledge of how to do this kind of thing. At scale, the only way you can do it is you involve other partners to help you. So we brought in an outside entity to help us with the intake because at this level, if we have 5,400 people who work for the federal government here, the majority of them will be furloughed and have problems. In order to pay their rent, in order to pay their mortgages, childcare, whatever utility we're going to do, we need somebody to help. So we had a firm that deals with these kinds of issues that has been very effective, very well-known throughout the state, has several, and they were our contractors. So they were the intake, and then they provide information to us, and we made decisions based on certain criteria that we created. So we have the relationship with the partners who can help us get this done if you want to do it. Right now, we will be, we work with all of our partners, the Department of Community Service, you know, Communications Department is the main source of getting word out, but the Community Services Department has eight, not eight zillion, they have a number of employees that are a code enforcement officer and other mechanism, excuse me, to help us get the word out. So there's a way we can get to all of these people, the intake and other stuff, we probably have to, again, like we did before, to be efficient and effective, bring another firm to help us. The categories we were talking about doing, as I said before, right now, we're just thinking, you know, mortgage, rent, childcare, utilities, disbursement methods. And the other thing somebody mentioned to me, well, you can use the Bowie pantry to do some of this, you can use other entities, but if we're going to be responsible for it, I also have to tell you, the Bowie pantry is a volunteer organization, has limited capacity of people who come in as well as other organizations. So for the fiscal and operational aspects to be efficient, we would have to assess whether or not those entities, whether nonprofit organizations can really do the job that you want to do to get the money out to people as fast as you can. So, and I'm sure our finance department would appreciate us not cluttering up their system with a lot of people who don't know what they're doing and can't handle these systems effectively. So we would then have to also prioritize who's going to get it, how much they're going to get, that kind of thing, and then we would come back with a proposal as to our prioritization process. This is just what we were thinking about initially, you know, the urgency of need, how we would assess that, families with children, seniors, folks with disabilities, folks who are veterans, public safety employees, that kind of thing. Bowie is unique for us in that our, both rents and mortgage payment rates are very high, so the amount of money you would give to one, you know, somebody got a mortgage anywhere between $3,000 and $5,000 a month, if you covered them for two months, and even 50 people, you see what that number is. So we have to be careful about how we prioritize that, set limits on who gets what and for what reason. But again, we've, that's what we do. I mean, we manage these kind of monies based on income and other things over the past 25 years and to be compliant with federal standards, so I'm sure we could do that with whatever standards council would establish. I just want to point out three people. One is Kay Starr, who is here, who's our grant writer, researcher person who is also involved in trying to get other monies and things to help us support this activity. She's also the person who's in charge of workforce training program and our fair housing initiatives. And then we have George Jones, who's in charge of managing our grants activities with all of the federal and other agencies we have, as well as the financial brain power behind our compliance with all of these things. And again, I just want to say, we, in 25 years, George has only been here 17, but we've never had a ruling of finding for any of the programs we've run with the federal, state, or any local government, quasi-government entities. Again, Gretchen Dade, who's joined us as our project manager in the Housing Community Development Division, who's running our housing programs, who has now been actively involved in dealing with all of these calls we've been getting and the rents. in dealing with all of these calls we've been getting and the rents we've been paying and the other services we've been gaining to homeless people. They've been tearing down tents and other things in DC. Those people aren't just going to Potomac. A lot of them are coming to Prince George's County and a lot of them we've been dealing with in the city of Bowie. This next chart just shows you something that is, that's about the types of functions and things that we do. I'll close out there and say thank you for your attention and thank you to my staff for your hard work and to Vern Teasdale and to Sidway. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boggs, I greatly appreciate it. I will turn to Mayor Adams. Do you have some comments you'd like to make?
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Please.
Yes, I just want to say thank you to the city staff and to all of those engaged, Jesse Boggs, Kay Starr, this day, all of you for putting this together. I just wanted to kind of preface what my request was and what we're looking to do is we're simply trying to make sure that we provide support for citizens in the city of Bowie who are taxpayers and others. But this is more of a socioeconomic thing. We want families and others to not go through things where their children or the elderly or anyone has to go through any trauma that they don't have to. I think it's also important that we understand that these are our friends, our neighbors. You know, they are our fellow citizens. And, you know, I've coined a phrase and I often say, one city, one Bowie. And I think this is a good example of that. We always each arrive and rise up and take care of those within our community. So this is one of those chances where we have that we need to do it. It's not something that's been planned, not something, I don't think anyone had any idea we would be doing, but we need to make sure that we take care of those who live in the city and make sure that we just try to keep them in a position of where they understand that they don't have to face, hopefully, evictions and food shortages and inability to play their utilities and all those kind of things and just see what we can do. I had used 1 million kind of as a cap on doing that. I had spoken to the city manager in general, just finding out if we chose to, could we afford to do it? And yes, we would be taken from the fund, but yes, we would, we could do it and we can do it. And I would just ask that all of you, my fellow council members, understand, all we're asking for tonight is to be able to move this forward, to say, yes, go give us that solid proposal and that cost capping out at 1 million and then see what we can do for our fellow citizens. I think we deserve to be able to stand up for those who live in our city and make sure that we do the right thing. You know, and that's the key, just doing the right thing, just doing what leadership does. And so having said that, if you don't mind, Mayor Protem, I think Councilwoman Rogers has some comments she'd like to make.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we're turned to colleagues here as well. Councilman Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mayor Protem. So when I thought about this, and anybody that knows me knows that I spent almost 17 years in the federal sector. And so therefore, this one hits a little differently, although it should hit everybody the same way. But our normal is not normal anymore. And what I see and what I hear is just heartbreaking. So when I, when I thought about this over the weekend, and, you know, I did a little research, everything that I saw that I was trying to put in a toolbox around this, Jesse talked about. So I talked about not, well, number one, I'll go back to just the concept. The concept is more than just our federally furloughed residents. We have a mother whose husband was taken from her by force by ICE that has three young children, and we don't know if she was the provider for the resources for these children or not, we just don't know that. And we don't know how many other opportunities like this will, you know, happen. And they're not opportunities, they're just horrible situations. And the same with the homelessness wherein they're, you know, driving people out of DC and folks are, you know, out in the median on 197 asking for money because they don't have a place to live or anything to eat. These times are different and these times are for community. So with that community, I think that what I heard was that we have to have a toolbox, we have to have many things available to us, which includes the religious facilities, the nonprofits, the private entities such as grocery stores, because we're coming up on Thanksgiving, we're coming up on Christmas, we're coming up on all kinds of, you know, religious holidays where gift giving is a normal practice. And the other piece of this is we don't know how long this will last and we don't know the residual impacts of the length of time. The utility companies are out there, but I'll tell you, just by doing my research, I found that most other municipalities, and I was looking at those that were around our size, like Rockville and Fredericksburg, I even looked within Prince George's County, like College Park and Hyattsville, most other municipalities are kind of pointing people to resources. I believe that we in Bowie have an excellent opportunity of creating a model, a model that can be shared with other municipalities across the country to show them how we do it through our toolbox and our expertise and the people that are sitting in this room that work for staff. So I thank you for the opportunity to make those comments. I will tell you, I'm very passionate about this because I know what it feels like not to know where your next meal is coming from or how you're going to pay your rent. I know how that feels. And so as a child, having to experience that type of trauma when you're accustomed to certain, you know, a certain lifestyle is devastating. I mean, we can bring in Bravo, we can bring in the Center for Performing Arts because that provides an opportunity for outlets because we also have the mental aspect of this as well, youth and family services. So I'll get off my soapbox, but I thank you for the opportunity to make these comments and I thank Bowie for stepping out and becoming a model for other municipalities across the country. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rogers. Anybody else comment? Councilman Brady?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me start off by commending staff who are pulling this together and doing such an excellent job in such a short time. I think it reflects well on your ability, but it also reflects well on the fact that the city has had this kind of talent in-house and we've relied on it time and time again. So you've just proven once again that you live up to our expectations and we want to thank you for that. As my colleague said, we are living in different, unique, strange times, which calls for thinking outside the box. And I think what's being proposed, what's being recommended is that unique vision, if you will. I would look at reaching outside as far as you can and be creative and maybe in past thinkings, maybe this organization would not be one you call, but it might be something that we reach out and speak to a private philanthropist or what have you, or a group or organization to see if it can't be tapped into. We need to come together and typically Bowie does that, we have a good, strong history of that and will continue to do that. So I want to commend, thank the mayor for bringing this forward and commend staff for such an excellent job. And I'm looking forward to the next steps on how we can actually establish this and defining the criteria because I think there are possible, possibly people that aren't federal workers that would fall into the need categories that we're looking to address. And I would hope our criteria would be not so strict and selective that they would not be able to be helped. If they, if they need it and they fall in the criteria, then I think we ought to help them too. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Brady. Councilman Tuesday.
I don't have a lot to say. I just want to just echo my colleagues and thank you staff for putting this presentation together. It's as, as we're living in difficult times, we're thinking outside the box as a community. I think we can even kind of help in terms of some of the service businesses that can, we can collaborate with to whereas they could give some type of incentives as well because as my colleague was sharing, you know, we're around the holiday time and hopefully that this is not, this is not something that lasts long. But definitely thank you for your, for your, you know, creativity and my colleagues and mayor as well for bringing this to staff.
Thank you all. Thank you, Councilman Truesdale. If I may, I'm going to take a couple moments to share a few thoughts. First of all, they are different times than what we've been accustomed to. I am a now retired federal employee of 37 years and keenly aware of that social compact that comes with being a federal employee, which the expectation is, is that you put in extra hours, the pay is not all that great, but you do in fact get pretty good benefits and you have good, stable, reliable employment over the course of time and you make that trade-off. And if you want big bucks, then you go roll the dice and go take a job somewhere that may not be there in three years and then go hunt down another job. So there are trade-offs and this is a social contract that's been broken recently. And so there I think are some significant issues associated with dealing with that. And I think, Mr. Boggs, if we are to do something, there ought to be some thought about what our existing counseling folks can lean into on that as well. I will say this, in 2019, there was the Government Employee Fair Treatment Act of 2019, which was abbreviated GIFTA. I guess they couldn't come up with anything more creative. But anyway, it ensured that after government shutdowns are resolved, that all federal employees will receive pay for time, whether they worked it or not. That is to say, if they were accepted and had to come in or whether they were sent home and told to twiddle their thumbs. I know that there's been some discussion slash assault on this from the administration level suggesting that this was in fact, you know, not the case. But oddly enough, it was the first Trump administration that signed that law into passage and it was in fact the OPM and OMB opinions at that time that that took care of all such needs. And there was no ambiguity about the intent of the law or the verbiage. I think this is all just, you know, a bunch of negotiating strategy tactics, diversion and antics that can be ignored. The fact of the matter is these folks will be repaid. That having been said, it is a very traumatic time to go through something that they're not expecting and they're not prepared for and that we ought to be in a position to facilitate some assistance. Now, I have a, I went to the government, the Maryland website and took a look at some of the things and you're going to see where I'm going with this in a moment. There are a number of resources that are out there available for employees that are universal, universal for federal employees in furlough situations. For housing protections, there is a statute that allows for pausing any eviction or foreclosure that's associated with non-payment of mortgages. So that's good news there that, you know, we won't be seeing, you know, a dramatic increase. Of course, people have to pay it once they get their payments. So that's good news, that's helpful for our federal employees. There's also electric and gas utility protections that are in place courtesy of the state level because they have regulatory authority over those services. So they're in essence allowed to, you know, forbear the bills and make, you know, waive the fees so that they can pay when they in fact do get paid. So that's good news there. The folks also have, through Maryland Credit Unions, there are no fee, no, or interest-free loans that are available. I just did a quick search, there were about 32 of them nationwide that are offering interest-free loans to federal employees because they know it's a good, a good bet. I know that my USAA, who I bank with, they're offering either $6,000 or $10,000 alone with no fees. And a lot of other credit unions and financial institutions are also providing that. And the, even the Maryland Department of Labor has a federal shutdown loan program as well. All of this to say that there are a lot of resources out there. And as we're looking at moving forward, I don't want us to duplicate efforts that exist elsewhere. So as we're, as we're seeing, you know, loans available, we're seeing arrangements made for mortgages and that sort of thing, I'd like, as you go forward on this idea, take a look at what, what we can do that is not duplicative of what other folks are doing. I'd hate for us to go spend a million dollars to, you know, help somebody pay their mortgage and then frankly, they get their money from their employer and they don't pay us back. You know, there's a concern with that. I mean, at some point in time, they're going to get paid and there's real question as why someone should pay a mortgage that somebody is eventually going to be able to pay themselves. So that is a big concern, a concern for me. Nonetheless, there is a need out there and I think as I went down the list, there were two things that stood out to me as not being readily addressed in the rest of the resource panel. And the first is water. The, the state does not have complete or does not choose to exercise complete regulatory control over water systems, so they, there's nothing statewide for that. However, I think, you know, certainly for our own, you know, residents who are on our water system, I think we need to look at what we do to forbear the payments until such time as they are able to pay so that we're not asking somebody to cash out 3, $400 on a water bill when times are tough or at least uncertain. So I think that that's important that we ought to take a look at. The other item that's not readily talked about is food. You mentioned the Bowie Food Pantry. There, I did speak with them today, as a matter of fact, and they have seen an uptick in interest and, how do I say, interest, clients that are either old clients that are returning, that were once not able to make it without assistance, then they did well and now they're back. Then there are some that are just newly in need and they are engaging in special programs for those folks that have recently lost their job or not, lost their job, who've recently been furloughed and now all of a sudden don't have cash on hand to pay that food bill. And I think that that is critical because someone took care of the mortgage by saying, we're not going to foreclose on you, but nobody's feeding them and nobody's taking them care of the water bill. So food and water to me are pretty, pretty essential elements of day-to-day living. And I think we ought to focus on that. And there's another aspect of this as well, which is when we, I saw the number that you mentioned was 5,400 or so federal employees. And I think the solution we come up with, whatever it happens to be, needs to punch above its weight level because a million bucks is a lot to the city. However, if you take the million bucks and split it up and give it to 5,400 people, that's That's not going to save a lot. That's not going to have much effect on the, you know, the recipients. It's a, it's a nice meal at, you know, at Olive Garden for a family of five, you know, with a tip and so forth. and so forth. So that's not meaningful to, you know, kind of a trade-off. To me, I'd rather be in a position where I say, "Hey, we had some truly needy people, and we were maybe able to make a meaningful difference in their daily lives," whether it's, you know, particularly in the food area and in water because we control that bill. And there may also be some other things that we can look at, other fees or other things that the city might impose on folks that we could, you know, forego for the interim, either delay payments till later, or maybe even have an opportunity to forgive entirely. So I do think that there are some options out there. And what I'd like to see come back is something that doesn't lose efficacy because of, you know, dilution, but also something that covers some of these core elements that have clearly been overlooked by others in the assistance pool. With that, I see Mayor Adams has a comment he'd like to make.
Yes, I just want to chime in and say, thank you for those comments. And I'll go back and say that some of those things you've talked about just now, Pro Tem, Wolfie, are things that were talked about too, that thrown around, payment back and all of those things. So what we saw tonight was just a general overview of types of things, where they were looking at the programs that the state had, all of those. So this would be comprehensive in what they would do, and it would give them a chance to go back and present all of those details. Tonight was not for the real detail, but even on some of those things you talked about, there were things that have been mentioned and that were going to be looked into. So I don't want anybody to think that there was any lapse in the presentation tonight, but it was more about direction given and just in general. The second thing I would say, and I don't mean it in any way other than a positive thing as we look at that, is for someone who's hungry, $183 is important. It matters. So no matter how small the amount may be that we can give to each individual, I'm sure whatever we can give will be appreciated. So having said that, I would like to see us move forward with this and have everyone, hopefully unanimously, move forward with the staff being able to go and really put together a solid presentation on what we can do and bring it back to us so that we can look at the details and really get into the weeds on some of it as we need to. So I ask that we support this moving forward and do that post haste so that our staff can get on it and get us a really good plan, a program. And I must say, I have total faith in the professionalism and the ability to make sure that we don't leave any stone unturned and that we do not duplicate any efforts. I think we will be able to inform all of those who are affected. I look forward to tonight moving this forward. I don't know if we need, Mayor Protam, a vote. We can. I guess we would need it. Or if we can just all agree to have it moved forward. And I'll turn that over to the city court to find out.
Mr. Mayor, I'm looking around the room here, and I think there's general consensus that there's interest in having staff look at a plan or options of moving forward, considering the comments that have been made this evening.
I'll be back in two weeks.
Yeah. Mr. Bugs, how long do you think?
Well, how long do I think, get back to you?
I'm sorry, I apologize. He started a sentence you couldn't hear, and so I should have reiterated the entire thought, which is, how long do you think you will need to come back with something that's researched and meaningfully thought through and all that kind of stuff?
Well, I did that tonight. You mean more specific? Okay, let me do this, to provide for you information about exactly how we would spend the money, the criteria, that kind of thing. You want me to take a week?
Let me jump in here, Mr. Mayor Protam. Thank you, Jesse. By the first week in November, the first meeting in November, we can have a more specific plan. What Jesse talked about was all the things that they're doing now. But I'll direct them and lead them, guide them to the point where there's a focus on rent support, food distribution, mortgage foreclosure support, and maybe two or three others with specificity as to what the criteria would be and how somebody, and we would recoup our monies when, if the act that you reference actually stands with Supreme Court and people like that, how we would get our money back or potentially. And we can have that back on the first. I want to say this, though. I mean, I'm going to accept a six-person consensus here and take this action. But considering the amount of money involved, it requires a budget amendment. All right? And any budget amendment requires a supermajority approval, just for the record, so everybody understands that, because we've all been through that once or twice. All right? So we've got the mission. Thank you very much.
Thank you kindly. All right. Thank you all to my colleagues and Mayor and staff for that discussion. We will now move on to the last item on the agenda. And we are sorry, Mr. Jackson, that you had to sit through the entire meeting to get to something that's so near and dear to you. But staff is going to provide an update on rat infestation under Governor Green Apartments that's being managed by Ross Management Services.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protam and members of City Council, Lori Cunningham, Assistant Director for the Department of Community Services. I will keep our update relatively brief, but we have been working with Ross Property Management for Governor Green Apartments because of the concern residents have brought to us with the rodent infestation in parts of the property. So I wanted to first thank the residents, especially Ms. Jackson and others who came forward to bring this to our attention, as well as our code enforcement staff, who has already been out at the property several times, to be able to investigate. To date, they have issued seven violations totaling $1,300 for the property. And we've also been working closely with the management company to ask for specific resolutions. We've asked them about remediating the property to ensure that they've cleaned the dumpster area, that they are also working with their exterminator company to ensure that the rat holes are sealed, and as well as the poisonous being dropped. We've also asked them to modify their valet pickup days and their compactor pickup days. On Mondays, the compactor is overflowing, which is causing more issues with the rodent infestation. So they have agreed to modify that day to a Friday pickup to avoid that Monday overflow. They've also covered several of the holes on one side of the dumpster and covered it with a lining and rocks to ensure that the rodents aren't able to get in that way. However, we have not been completely satisfied with their response thus far. There are still other holes that are on the property. We're also worried about the rodents harboring near the residential areas, especially near the first floor in the parking lot. And we've had staff that have gone out on several occasions and still are noticing the rats even after we've had our outreach. So therefore, we've also asked them to remove shrubbery, which they have done near the dumpster area. We've also reached out to the county for additional support. We were advised that the health department does not work in this area, but they did give us some strategies to help remediate this situation as well. And then we have our next steps with a letter that the city manager is going to be sending out. City Manager, do you want me to report out on that as well? So we will be sending out a letter tomorrow issuing a formal directive requiring a third-party certified rodent extermination inspector report to be submitted to the city, as well as asking them to remediate the property. They will have 10 days to respond to that request. If they have not satisfied that, I'm sorry, if they have not remediated the property to our satisfaction, then we will be working to have a contractor go on out, and we will take care of this situation ourselves, and then build a property management company for action.
Now, let me chime in here. You know, I was in the Army, and I moved 14 times. And I'm from Mobile, Alabama, which is arguably one of the biggest counties in the state. Any instance, in any other city, in other state that I've been in, where you have rodents that affect the sanitation of a building, because they carry disease, and everybody knows that, right? It is an issue with the public health, plus other agencies. The failing that exists currently is that when we contacted the Prince George's County Health Department, they handed us off to DEEPY. DEEPY says, "Well, gosh, you guys got your own code enforcement." But, you know, all permits, the use of occupancy permits and all those things that are controlled by the county, of course, we don't have that sort of authority. And it became apparent that there is a large crack in the organization when it comes to this issue. Of course, we've all been known, maybe I've known a couple of restaurants that lost control of rodents. Well, the board of health came in and shut them down until they got rid of them. The rest of the United States. I don't know why we're here. However, if these people don't comply, we're going to go on the property and kill the rats and bill it and put it on their tax bill. All right? Because that's the only thing that we can do. That's what we can do. And also, you know, this Terminix coming out and doing this and that, Terminix does what you pay them to do. There are best agencies and controller organizations that know how to kill rats. And there are five or six different effective ways to do it. A good contractor, after five days, you've got no problem. All you've got is corpses. But we aren't getting that because they're obviously not paying for it. They're doing a minimal situation. And of course, they caused the problem by allowing trash to build up overflow and spill out. So they physically attracted the rats, who are everywhere, subterranean. And if you ever lived through a drought, you'll know when they come up to eat because everything's dried out down there. But we're going to serve them. They've been served. And we've talked to corporate, but the most affirmative George Patton-type course of action here is to physically go in there, kill the rats, put it on their bill, and put it on their tax bill and collect at that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager. Thanks to staff. I'll turn to colleagues here. Anybody have any questions, thoughts, or comments?
I would just like to say, I think the city manager summed that up pretty good. Yeah, let's do all we can to get care of this. Again, we know it's a public health issue, and we don't want it to spread in any way, shape, or form. So thank you, staff, for doing all you can to make sure that we eradicate this problem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I will chime in on this as well at another level, which I think, first of all, an aggressive course of action to eliminate them is warranted, needed, and needs to be taken. So I appreciate that. The second element here is code enforcement and the limitations that we may have in that arena. I think our code is really designed for rental properties that are associated with individual properties, so that if you have a single-family home or a townhouse that's being rented, the fines, I think, are consistent with that. The exposure is a unit. And if a unit, a house, has, you know, a problem, there are fines consistent with one house. I think perhaps that there ought to be an effort made to look at the code and establish different levels of penalties and fines for multi-unit dwellings, so that when you look at an apartment building and you realize that there are 45 units in that building and they have a rodent problem, that's not one house having a rodent problem. That's 45 members of our community, family members plus, that are affected by that. And I think the fines should be commensurate with that and not be, you know, and I think that might be useful for staff. And just opening that up as the discussion point, would like to hear thoughts both from the code enforcement side as well as from the city attorney.
So apartments are considered commercial, so in our code, we can fine more technically for those, but not as an individual apartment or individual unit. Now, starting October 1, there was legislation passed that the municipalities can charge now up to $5,000 for their fines, or go up to maximum $5,000, whereas before it was just $1,000. But that's something that if you wanted to do commercial properties, that you guys, as the council, would have to go through and say, "We would like to adjust for those properties." That's something that we couldn't do. I mean, we can present it, but we can't change it, basically. So that's where we are. So we are now charging them as a commercial property, but it's still limited on what we could do and what we can do until we can get it resolved. And also, I did bring some affidavits. So even if the individuals that are affected would like to fill out and become the witness of the affidavit, these can also be issued as another municipal infraction on top of the ones that we were issuing every week, three a week. So if they want to take these with them, to fill them out, date and time, but they have to bring them back, they have to be notarized, so then we can issue citations. And they would have to go to court, if it has to go that far, to be witness to the facts.
Excellent. Thank you. Madam, city attorney?
Yeah, we can amend the fines to establish multi-family residences as a separate class with a separate level of fines.
I'd like to see something as aggressive as the rats are, in terms of persistence. Well, they're prolific and they're offensive. I would like to see everything we can do. So thank you, if you would. I assume everybody else here is in agreement. Councilman Truesdale, you have a comment?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I definitely agree. If we can, you know, adjust the maximum fines as soon as possible, there, I mean, we have businesses across the street as well, you know, and they're being affected by this all, including the residents. I have had a chance to talk to Ms. Lenitra over the weekend as well. And, you know, you see kids, you know, they're not going to the bus stop, actually. They're kind of spread out until the bus get there. And, you know, it's a safety and it's a health hazardous for our residents. So I 100% agree if we can move as quickly as possible. Thank you.
All right. Barring any, oh, one more. Councilman Rogers?
One other thing. I do have to do my due diligence in that. I have been engaging with people on the county level because I know we're going to try to handle this on our level. But I think the city manager made an excellent point in that if this apartment dwelling was a restaurant, public health would be in there shutting it down. And it should be the same way for apartment buildings. So I'm not, you know, I'll be working with the mayor and others to follow up with the county on their responsibilities in this as well. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Trues.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Rogers. All righty. I'll leave that for you. If barring any other comments, seeing none, I think that closes out the discussion on that subject. on that subject. I'm sorry.
You looked right at me.
I looked right at you. You didn't, you didn't wave, you didn't flag me down. Councilman Brady?
Thank you. Just a curious question. These are apartments, correct?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Yes.
As far as the structure with the county, are they covered, do they need a use and occupancy permit in order to operate?
Yes. Everybody does.
So if they lose the use and occupancy, then all of the renters would be forced to leave, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Thank you. And you, on this?
Thank you, Councilman Brady. All right, now, seeing no further comments or questions, we'll consider that issue closed. And now we'll look for everybody's favorite motion. Councilwoman Rogers?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I would like to make a motion to close session, to adjourn to close session under the statutory authority of the Maryland annotated, annotated code, general provisions, Article Subsection 3-305B7, to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice, and Subsection 305B8, to consult with staff, consultants, and other individuals about pending or potential litigation.
I second.
Motion's properly made and seconded.
I'll beg it.
Yes, yes, yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you, everybody. Thank you for those who are here, and thank you for those watching at home.
Everyone for your hard work.
Thank you, everyone, tonight.